Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. This May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. We're beginning our meeting. At six thirty one P M in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We will excuse Councilman Norfelt this evening. Other members of the council present are Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Hune, myself, and Councilmember Christensen. We're also joined at the dais with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. Our opening ceremony this evening will be Councilman Harmon, we'll turn the time to him.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll all please rise and we'll cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hey, thank you. We now have our approval of the minutes for May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Turn those minutes to the council for discussion or emotion.
Move to approve the minutes of May thirteenth.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, those stand approved. We now, we will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to s- Comment shall limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not have a- If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Comments shall be limited to city business and matters within the purview of the city council. Speakers should not expect any debate with the mayor, city council, or city staff. The mayor, city council, and city staff may respond after the comment period has concluded. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or members of the city council. If you are here for application Z T one, two thousand and twenty five, that addresses standards for landscaping on high image arterial streets, or for application G P Z four, twenty four, related to property at twenty nine ninety six South Redwood Road, we will have a separate public hearing for those items, and it would, it would be best to hold your comments until that time. Thank you. So Speaker one.
Good evening, council. My name is Chanel Hill and I'm the founder and senior officer of Stand Against Fear and Exploitation, a five oh one C four nonprofit known as SAFE. We're not here to talk about politics. We're here to talk about protection, about children, about accountability, and about a law failing to do what it's designated to do. Protect about, protect the public from known convicted predators. Just weeks ago, Wanda Barzee, a woman who helped kidnap and abuse Elizabeth Smart, was seen entering not one but two public parks in Utah. A clear violation of her registry conditions. But under current Utah law, the violation is treated as a misdemeanor. No mandatory sentence, no felony. Just a possible fine, short stint in jail. And back out again. Let me ask you, how many red flags do we ignore until the blood is seen on your hands? This is not hypothetical. Barzee justified being in those parks by saying she was followed by the Lord's command. The exact same words that she used when she kidnapped Elizabeth Smart over twenty years ago. SAFE is saying it's enough. We are introducing the Sex Offender Registry Violation Accountability Act. A proposed state law that would reclassify registry violations as felonies. Because walking into a park full of children after helping abduct one is not a minor crime. We are proud to share that a Utah House representative has expressed its interest in sponsoring this bill. We need more than just a sponsor. We need support. And that's why I am here in front of you tonight. I'm here to ask, I'm not here to ask for funding. I am here to ask for something far more powerful, your voice. We ask each council member, the mayor, to submit a letter of support in this bill. Show the state legislator that your city believes predators should face real consequences when they violate the law. And that our children deserve more than just the luck to stay safe. We are building a coalition across Utah from Mill Creek to Ogden, from Salt Lake to West Jordan, and even to Saint George. This isn't about city. This isn't about a city. It's about a community that has all said never again. I am going from city to city and I will not stand, I will not stand still until we all say enough is enough. Thank you for your time and I hope you guys all stand with SAFE.
Okay, thank you. Speaker two.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy Muir from Gerald Wright STEM Academy. I'm here on behalf of my twenty five students who have written some proposals in what they're feeling is a, a need that needs to be fixed. Our school lies on one side is our school, the other side is Foxtel Park. And in between is like a vacant lot area. And I've been going through a academic service learning project with my students this school year. And they worked through trying to find a problem to fix in the school or outside the school. And this is what they came to see was this area where the students have to walk through kind of the field. We were there in the September time and it was very dry. There was a definite line between the park being watered and this area that wasn't being kept at all. And they couldn't understand what the difference is and why they had to walk through the goat thorns and all the different things to get to school. And so they're requesting that the city council and the mayor will take a look at their proposals. So they documented, they took some surveys and different things like that that they gathered, they created their things. They knew they couldn't make a change in the outside. So they brought it into the school where they worked on a little hallway replica of what they hope could be in the future, something that will look like a butterfly garden or someplace where the students can go for a learning experience rather than walking amongst the thorns and those types of things. So I have a little booklet here. I wasn't sure if I could hand that to each of you to kind of peruse and those kinds of things, but I can do that there. But thank you for taking the time to listen to the students of Gerald Wright STEM Academy.
Thank you. All right, Speaker three.
Good evening, Mayor Lang and councilors. You know what I'm going to talk about, I'm sure. About the tee times at the golf courses. With it getting hot, maybe it'll be easier. Some of them won't want to play, but I seen a, a news program out of Los Angeles. It's a, came out of Los Angeles, but they were golf courses in San Diego. And the players there could also not get tee times. They found out there was a group that was using bots to take all the tee times and then they were being sold in a secondary market. And it was using four up, the same that we use here. The thing that they did to help stop it, and I don't know that it stopped, is that they started charging ten dollars to hold a tee time. That ten dollars would then go to your payment for the, for the play. Or if you didn't show up, it was forfeited to the golf courses. And that seemed, they said, to open it up. It was on L A K, K P B S, Public Media. And it was in San Diego. So I just, I know we have troubles here. We have four in our group and all four of us trying to get tee times. And it's especially in the spring and, and fall, it, it just don't happen. So I hope there's somebody that can look into that. I don't know if that's going on here, but it could be. The other thing is that they, they have leagues, the Veterans Leagues Monday. Then they have League Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They have, you know, Men's Senior League, Men's League, Ladies League, Ladies Senior League. So it takes up all the days. And when they take tee times two weeks in advance, I don't know if they're taking one tee time or if they're making two or three tee times. And that may influence it also that makes it difficult for the rest of us. So thank you for listening to me and I hope somebody will look into it.
Thank you. Speaker four.
Hello, my name is Kate Insumption. I'm here to speak about the zoning code considerations, so I will hold my comment.
Okay, thank you. Speaker five.
Hello, my name is Diane Rikudroka. I'm here on behalf of Community Education Partnership of West Valley City. And I'm speaking in regards to renewing the contract of C E P. I currently work as the coordinator at Granger Elementary School. And I'd love to talk to you a bit about how the people in this room have allowed me to say yes to parents in crisis. Every year, Granger has a waitlist that is a mile long. We started with fifty eight students this year. We could have started with eighty eight. Our parents are so reliant on this after-school program that we run at Granger Elementary School. And every year we set aside a few students spots that my principal or my social worker or parents can come forward to ask me for help. For example, last year I had a family who had a horrifying car accident. And my principal was able to email me over Christmas break and say, can we find spots for these two kids? And I was able to say absolutely. In years past, I've had students who have been affiliated with gangs whose parents need that window covered by school so that those kids don't go off with cousins or uncles who are in gangs. And after-school is that window of safety that we provide. I've had students who are in crisis in other ways. They have had trauma in their family lives. They have had horrifying things happen in their personal family lives and they have been able to have a safety net that's provided by after-school that they just would not have without us. And there's an assumption being made that without after-school, our kids would fall into, well, we certainly could daycare. Or we certainly have families that maybe grandma or grandma, and that's just not the reality of the situation for our West Valley City families. These students are desperate for our care. By renewing our contract, you are making sure that these at-risk students are getting desperately needed care. These are students who are at risk for a number of reasons. Academically, they are incredibly far behind. Our third graders are at a proficiency level, proficiency level. I believe we are at seventy four percent are below proficiency in the third grade. If you can fund after-school, we can meet their needs academically and socially, and especially when it comes to safety. And the reality of the situation is every year that we do not fund after-school, these kids are at risk. There are a number of safety issues that just will not be met if you do not support us. And it is one of my great joys to say yes, of course, to principals, to social workers, and to parents who are in crisis. And I would love to continue to have that opportunity to say yes to them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker six.
Hi, my name's Kaylin Oldright. I'm also with the Community Education Partnership of West Valley City, asking you guys to renew our grant. I've prepared a little thing. I'm going to read it this time. Last time I blew it, so. Over twenty thousand kids in the West Valley area have attended after-school programs under the C E P grant. If those kids had not been busy with after-school programs, what would they have been doing? Think about it for a second. Most of these kids would end up in gangs, drugs, stealing things, finding trouble on the streets. After twelve years of coordinating an after-school program at the same school and working with those kids, around six hundred of them, I strongly feel that the kids would not have had as many of these amazing opportunities that we have been able to offer them with the funding from C E P. Your funding helps kids keep, keep kids sti- sorry. Your funding keeps kids safe and keeps them off the streets during those critical hours when they don't always have guidance, guidance at home. One hour before school and two hours after school are when many kids are left unsupervised due to working parents, and this is when they find themselves in trouble. We've had kids checked out of school for oper- for appointments during the day only to return to the school because they don't want to miss out on anything in the after-school program. Some of the kids even come back and volunteer in my program year after year. Some of the kids have moved on and become student body officers in choir, theater, band, and so much more. Life has a lot of inconsistencies, but the kids at Silver Hills always knew that they had an after-school program to look forward to and a friendly, smiling staff member to greet them. Test scores may not have always been perfect. Of course, they're going to go up and down. But where would these kids be if we had not tried anything at all? We only, we can only hope that we have enriched many lives and helped encourage educational growth from all of these kids. Who knows, someday you could be sitting right next to one of them. It was really hard for me this year to say goodbye to these kids. I've been there twelve years, six hundred kids. And to have to look at their faces and say, I'll see you next year. With no plan in place is one of the hardest days of my life. And I say that because I've had so much support from my own family, friends, neighbors, everybody that I know that I've gotten involved in this program as well. My day job is at youth services. I see the kids come into J R C. I see the kids that are brought in for fighting at school. I hear their stories. I can tell you firsthand, a lot of the kids I work with are there because they don't have guidance. They don't have that parent parental support. A lot of these kids in this area, their parents are working two, three jobs. And they're working a lot of night shifts, doing a lot of things that other people aren't wanting to do at night. I've had kids that are really scared to be at home right now because of other things going on with the politics. They have the support of the after-school program.
Thank you.
So please keep renewing our contract.
Thank you. Speaker seven.
I am also speaking about the Community Education After-School Program. I've been run, playing with it, helping with the kids in junior high on the west side schools here for a little over a quarter century. When it started, we were having a lot of problems with, with kids getting in trouble after school, that, that golden hour, those two hours after school before parents can get home. It's only gotten worse. More parents are working. We have an amazing number of our kids who wait after school. Just wait because their parents can't, they don't have the gas, they don't have the time. They have to wait. If their brother or sister is in a sport, they have to wait for them. If their younger brother and sister are getting out of school at four, four thirty, they have to wait so their parents can pick them all up at one time. That unsupervised time, when the kids are unsupervised is when we get more vandalism. We get more kids getting in trouble. They start doing things they shouldn't do. Where if they can have a safe spot. Now, I'm not going to say, hey, the kids that come to after-school have stellar, perfect grades. Most of them are there because they need other help. Some use our tutoring, but a lot of them, I teach art. A lot of them come to me to be able to create, be safe, do things that frankly, they can't do at home. They don't have the space. In one case, they have a younger brother who is autistic. If they brought anything like their projects home, they would get destroyed. They did schoolwork projects in my room. We tried stuff. I have one little girl, the only reason she came to school was so she could come to the after-school program and use some of my tools for projects she wanted. A lot of the kids start a project at school, like it, and want to do more. Their parents don't have the money for the equipment or supplies. But it's still back to the same thing. It's about safety for the kids. When they're in our rooms and supervised, they're safe. When their parents know that they're there, the parents aren't frantic trying to figure out, oh, have they gone to a friend's house? Are they out with gang kids? Are they sitting on the front of the school waiting? What are they doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker eight.
Hi, Mike Markham. As a veteran of the unspoken war, I attended my very first Veterans Memorial Day program on Monday that West Valley City had put on. I've always tried to avoid those because I have a lot of bad memories. But I went to this one and I would really like to thank the council people. And I had to go out of my way to be there. I drove home Sunday from my beautiful little cabin up in the mountains so I could attend this. And I would like to thank the people from the council that, that showed up. Mr. Peely, Don Christensen, Karen, Wes, or Whitstone, for taking the time out and showing up to a function like that. It was thirty minutes. Nine, I pulled out of the parking lot at nine thirty-three. I got there early to help set up. I think it's an important thing for people to show support to veterans. We support a lot of the veterans that have been killed. We've got the P O Ws. But sometimes you come home and it's worse than death. I can't tell you what I put my family through. I finally decided it was time for meds. It's made a world of difference in my life. I get mad at nothing. I just sit back, take it how it comes. I wished I'd have done the meds when my wife was still alive. But I chose not to and I wished I would. Now you can't change that. But we need you people to stand up and support the veterans. Thank you very much for being there, Mr. Peely, Don, Karen. Well, like I say, thirty minutes Monday morning. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Speaker nine. Speaker nine.
Casey Kendall, teacher, coach at Valley Junior High. I just wanted to thank you for past funding with the after-school programs and encourage future funding. I, I've seen in Money Club, as I've filled in, just the benefit of these young students learning about entrepreneurship, learning about the importance of prioritizing like needs above wants, avoiding payday loan companies and the, or the dangers of those companies, which for this, for this community and with the prevalence of them in West Valley, Taylorsville area, I think that's very valuable for the students. Kind of reflecting other comments that have been said, it can be a safe place for these students to go after school. I've seen, I've seen students that have joined gangs in the past. And I think that having like a good, safe, stable environment can make a big difference there. I've coached basketball and track and cross-country, and that's great for a lot of the kids, but the after-school programs can provide a greater variety. Students can go and practice like art. They can do activities with Legos. They can go and get help with homework. And so just wanted to encourage that. When I was at, one of the days at Money Club, I was just so impressed with one of the, one of the workers there from Granite Credit Union. She spoke Spanish and English, and there were these Spanish-speaking students that hadn't been in the United States very long, and she was able to, to basically be presenting information in English and Spanish at the same time to these two groups. And I just thought that was so, so valuable, especially as financial literacy is a course in high school that they're required to take, but besides that, a lot of, a lot of these students aren't going to be exposed to these ideas anywhere else, and it can help build a, a good foundation when they're young. So again, just wanted to thank you for past funding and encourage future funding.
Hey, thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak that did not have a chance to sign up? Go ahead and come up. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lang. My name's Ryan Mahoney. I live in West Valley City under Tom Hunn's district. Came to this area. I wanted to just introduce myself to the council, to the mayor and the manager. I plan on running for city council at large here in the near future and just wanted to say hello and hopefully get the chance to earn some support and do some work for my community and this great council. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, council. Sorry. Good afternoon, council chamber and everything. My name is Jeffrey Crosby. I'm at sixty-one fifty-six West Jargon Way, West Valley City, Utah. Zip code eight four one one eight. I'm here to express my concerns about kids being in after-school programs that they're being moved to other buildings, which they shouldn't because the buildings that they basically are in and everything is like a home to them and everything based on the staff and everything that they are used to. I work at Silver Hills Elementary School and their after-school program. I've been doing that for about seven years and everything as an aide. And every day that I go into there and work with the kids and even help them with their work or even teach them science every day, I see the enjoyment and the smiles upon their faces and everything, which I think is the biggest part in everything. They deserve to stay where they are because again, they're comfortable where they are, knowing the people that they know. And I can relate to that and everything, especially with my family and everything. And in a way, the kids are like family and stuff. We are connected in so many ways because in a way, our staff are like parents and everything to those kids. We watch over them and protect them and give them life lessons that hopefully they can take to the future for themselves. And maybe even grow and strengthen themselves and share with other people too. So I humbly ask you that, please, may we be able to keep students and everything in after-school programs in the buildings and the schools where they are comfortable with. Because again, it's a form of security and a form of home and love and family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Kenzie Simpkins. I am with the Silver Hills Elementary School, after-school program. As an aide, I was volunteering since I was sixteen. I've been an employee for ten odd years. The difference that it makes for those kids that come in every single day that are committed, they also help us stay committed to them and all of the help and effort. It's, it cycles through all of us. And in return, we get to watch those kids grow academically, their personalities change when they go through the grades that we're always here to help them always improve. The difference that we see in them, they also see in us as we grow together. And that's something that's very, very important that we could not do without your guys' help with all of this program. The, the kids definitely put a significant amount of gratitude on us individually as people, and it's just as important for them to come to after-school as for us to show up every single day because we serve that purpose for them. It's, it's true that every one of these individuals have said before, those crucial hours after school are very, very important. And we've seen the negative outlook on those and the positive. When they come to the after-school program, there's kids that don't join until their third grade and we get to watch them progress until they're ready to go on. And the progress that we are able to see in them, it's proven academically through their personality, the way that they can just achieve all of those goals. And it's really rewarding when we get comments and discussions from their teachers saying, oh, they've really excelled in this and they're going to be great at this. And then when they do need the help, they, we're able to provide that for them. And when we see a change in all of that, just a big, you know, huge circle that comes around. around, it's really, really rewarding. Every single year that we continue to do this, that we're able to do this, it makes a really, really big change, and we really continue to, to continue that for the, for the kids. And just to change that they'll be able to one day maybe put them, you know, they can be in our shoes to make a difference for everyone that comes forth. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more, if somebody else?
Hello. My name is Riley Ogden. I live in West Valley, out by Hunter High School. I currently work at Academy Park Elementary as a education and support professional, as well as a teacher in our after-school program. One of the, one of the biggest things that I think is a big takeaway for after-school programs is not only tutoring that can be offered, but that these are opportunities that kids might not get outside of school due to financial strains on families or time or just not having programs available. And kids look forward to, say, going to sports club or sustainable recycling clubs that we have at our schools. Girls on the Run, throughout the school day, they ask like, "Hey, are we having our club today?" And stuff. It matters to these little kids, and not even just little kids, but just kids in general. And we should show them that, you know, we're here to strive for their future, not only in, in any way that we can, truly. Anyway, please consider refunding the Community Education Partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody want to take one minute?
Hi, I'm Angie Alsop. I am the behavioral health aide at Truman Elementary. I don't have a lot to add for the after-school program, but I wanted to mention that there are a few things that we see, such as the extra snack that so many children need, and getting a chance to work with other people within the school helps us when any crises happen within the school. So just something else to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our public hearings. First, any of the council want to speak?
Yes, Mayor, of course. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for coming here and, you know, very courageous, you know, to speak here in front of us, and appreciate that very much. And also, I want to say thank you for the restaurant day last Monday, I mean yesterday, and Dawn Mayor and, Wetstone's there and also Peely there, great that represent us, but at the same time, people, they don't make it. It does, it does not mean they don't support restaurant. My dad, he passed away in a battle when I was five years old. So don't feel, don't make people feel like guilty. Uh-huh. I think the best way to do it, encourage people to do, look up our example and to people that can follow you, to don't do, put people on the spot, feel like they're guilty. And that's what I wanted to say with you today.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilman Hune's comments and also commend the people that came here tonight. We too have lives and activities that go on in our lives. I happened to be at Arlington Cemetery yesterday, so anyway, I was participating in a, in an event. We're grateful, I'm grateful for the council members that can to be to all of our activities because we can all be to everything, so I appreciate the efforts of those that can go when they can. And again, I appreciate the efforts of those people that have come tonight because it takes a lot of courage to stand up and express your feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to our first public hearing. It is application ZT1 2025. This is an ordinance change to address standards for landscaping along high image arterial streets. This change would provide landscaping alternatives in addition to lawn and artificial turf while still establishing specific standards for the streets that provide primary access into and through the city. I will now open the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak on this matter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kate Insomption. I live at 4433 West 3100 South, which just happens to be directly across the street from Monroe Elementary School. That area or that street is very difficult to access the road at the times that the school is being entered and exited by the children. In the mornings around eight o'clock, eight-thirty, it can sometimes take me upwards of 30 minutes to get out on that road because people do not let us back out of our driveway into that road. And so, me and my wife, when we realized this after we moved in our house, we decided that we were gonna put in a roundabout driveway in our front lawn, and this would give us a safer access to that road so that we don't have to back out onto 31st South. We were very concerned about the children that are constantly crossing our sidewalk and behind our cars as we are patiently trying to access that road. So last summer, my wife called City Hall and asked if we were allowed to do this, and at the time, we were told we were not allowed to do concrete, but that we were allowed to do gravel as would be considered landscaping. So I spent the majority of last summer digging out our yard by hand and installing a gravel driveway with plans to landscape the remaining area of our yard to look as if I did not just drop a bunch of gravel in our driveway. I finished the driveway last November, and we have used it all winter long during the school year and have felt much safer and much more confident about accessing 31st South without chances of hitting a child and causing a car accident by backing out into 31st South. We came home from a vacation just a few weeks ago and had a citation in our mailbox saying that we were not allowed to use any kind of hard surface in our yard, and that included gravel, which contradicted what we were told over the phone when we called City Hall. So I contacted our, our local representative, Matt McPherson, who actually campaigned at my house while I was constructing our driveway. And I had a long conversation with him at that time, a year ago, about the advantages of the driveway and the safety issues of it. And he also pointed out that it would also be a good idea because we don't have a sprinkler system in our yard, and it's good that we're not using water to water a large area of grass. And so he told me at the time that if we had any issues with this, to contact him, and so I did when we received the citation, which I assume he contacted many of you, and that is why I am here, and I assume that is why we're discussing this topic. But like I said, I'm just hoping we can get this resolved where we can keep our gravel driveway. We've been using it excessively since installing it, and again, we felt much safer with the many kids that cross our lawn and cross our sidewalk in the morning around eight, eight-thirty, which is when I go to work, it's often when my wife goes to work. And when we come home, it's the same thing. In order to back in our driveway, instead of having to back in, I can do a loop in our driveway and then back my truck in. It's been much safer. We've been using a lot less water to water the few areas. I've not finished landscaping our yard due to the citation. I was not gonna put any efforts in until I knew whether or not I had to remove the gravel driveway, which I have installed. I'm really hoping that we can get this resolved to the point that I can keep our gravel driveway, which is safer for the kids, safer for me and my wife, and safer for the drivers that drive across 31st South every morning and afternoon. Yeah, that's all I have to say, but thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter?
I have a very easy comment. It's a great start if we can actually do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I will now close the public hearing and turn the time over to the council for discussion or motion on ordinance 25-08. That would amend the city's ordinances to provide landscape alternatives to high image artillery, arti- nevermind, streets.
Is this just for commercial property or is it for residential and commercial?
It's mainly just commercial, was my understanding from the explanation two weeks ago.
That's what I thought. So I just want to make sure this gentleman understands that probably not affecting your property, but we will have staff get ahold of you and talk to you about your situation. But, but I will move to approve ordinance 25-08.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilmember Wood? Councilmember Wetstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our second public hearing tonight is for application GPZ4 2024 filed by DAI requesting a general plan change from commercial light manufacturing to medium-density residential and a zone change from A to RM for property at 2996 South Ridwood Road. The applicant is proposing to demolish the two existing homes on the property and construct a 26-unit, two-story rental town home development. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wished to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn the time over to the council for discussion or motion. We have three action items this evening. Ordinance 25-09 to address the general plan change, ordinance 25-10 to address the zone change, and resolution 25-76 to enter into a development agreement to the council.
Motion to approve ordinance 25-09.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamik?
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Now to ordinance 25-10.
Motion to approve ordinance 25-10.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamik?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. And we'll consider resolution 25-76 to the council.
Motion to approve resolution 25-76.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamik?
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. This is our typical acceptance of a warranty deed to the council for discussion or motion.
Motion to approve resolution 25-77 of the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamik?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no need for a closed session, so we just have one more action item.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. We will be back on June 10th.